Everyone's ready. Let's get our council members back on camera and we'll get underway six o'clock. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the council for June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Before we begin, I'd like to recognize this meeting is taking place on the traditional and seated territories of the Staminus First Nation. And with that, we will get underway. The first item on our agenda this evening is the agenda approval. Ms. Smith, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
Yes, your worship. There is one additional public hearing submission. Item six point one point three. It's a email received from Aurora Pallad from Fortis B C Install Center. And we have a delegation request from Richard Finnegan regarding the D V P application at three fifty Shemenas Road. So that would be adding a new item ten for delegations and renumbering the agenda after that.
Thank you. So with those additions, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Stevens. All those in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Patterson, I assume you weren't opposed, or were you opposed? Your hand came up when I said any opposed. Okay. All right, passes unanimously. We're off to a flying start. We've approved our agenda. The first item on our open agenda this evening is our public hearing. And I will go through my notes here and just again, I seem to have intermittent technical issues. If you see me drop off camera, I am here and listening. I just want to be able to hear everyone's comments. So if you see my camera go off, it's because I'm having a little bit of bandwidth issues. This public hearing this evening is convened pursuant to section forty-three of the Community Charter and section four six four of the Local Government Act to allow the public to make representations to council regarding bylaw numbers. Two zero six seven, two zero six eight, and two zero six nine. This public hearing is convened virtually pursuant to ministerial order M one nine two. Everyone present will have a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. No one will be discouraged from prevent or prevented from making their views known. However, it is important that remarks be restricted to matters contained within the proposed bylaws. Members of council may ask questions following presentations. However, the function of function of council at a public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws. Once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, those who wish to speak again may do so. Once the public hearing is closed, no further submissions or comments from the public can be accepted by members of council. Written submissions received prior to June tenth are included in the public hearing agenda package. Written submissions received between June tenth and three P M today were provided to council separately as a late item. Any written submissions received between three P M today on the close of the public hearing will be read into the public record. Written submissions for bylaws number bylaw numbers two zero six seven, two zero six eight, and two zero six nine can still be emailed to info@ladiesmith.ca until the close of the public hearing. Please be advised that the public hearing will be recorded in live stream, so your name, address, and comments will become part of the public hearing record. If you'd like to speak, please click the raise your hand feature in the webinar controls. When it is your turn, you'll receive the prompt which will ask you if you'd like to be unmuted. Once you accept the prompt, you will be able to make your comments. Your video will remain off. If you've called in by phone only, you need to press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. Once you finish speaking, you will be muted again. When speaking, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. I will now ask senior planner Christina Hovey to introduce the proposed bylaws. Ms. Hovey.
Thank you. The following three bylaws are the subjects of this public hearing. One, road closure and dedication renewal bylaw twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty seven. Official community plan bylaw two thousand and three, number fourteen eighty-eight, amendment bylaw number sixty-five. Twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty-eight, and three. Town of Lady Smith zoning bylaw twenty fourteen, number eighteen sixty, amendment bylaw number thirty-seven, twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty-nine. The purpose of bylaw number twenty sixty-seven is to close and remove the road dedication on thin strips of land along Ludlow and Rocky Creek Road adjacent to eleven thirty Rocky Creek Road. This will make the boulevard narrower along these two sections of road. The town intends to sell these lands to the property owner at eleven thirty Rocky Creek Road. Bylaw numbers twenty sixty-eight and twenty sixty-nine both apply to eleven thirty Rocky Creek Road. The property is legally described as lot A, District Lots twenty-four and thirty-eight. Oyster District Plan V I P seven one two four eight. The purpose of bylaw number twenty sixty-eight is to amend the official community plan to change the subject property from industrial to general commercial. The purpose of bylaw number twenty sixty-nine is to amend the zoning bylaw to change the subject property from C D one tourist service to C five shopping center commercial with site-specific provisions. In order to permit a retail plaza and drive-through coffee shop, the site-specific provisions allow for other permitted uses in addition to the uses permitted in the C five zone and require that the buildings on the property be built in accordance with the B C Energy Step Code. The proposal is subject to a number of conditions, including a requirement to construct and partially fund a roundabout at the intersection of Ludlow and Rocky Creek Roads. Notice of this public hearing was printed in the Lady Smith Chronicle newspaper on June third, twenty twenty one and June ten, twenty twenty one, and was posted to the town's website as well as on various community notice boards. The notice was mailed and delivered to all properties located within sixty meters of the subject property. Notice of bylaw number twenty sixty-seven was also mailed to utilities that have infrastructure in the area of the proposed road closure. A copy of the notice, the proposed bylaws, and background information was made available at the front counter of City Hall and Development Services and on the town's website for the notice period. Staff in the Development Services Department have been available to respond to questions prior to the public hearing. At three P M today, the town has received two written submissions relating to bylaw numbers twenty sixty-seven, twenty sixty-eight, and twenty sixty-nine. Thank you.
Be my microphone. That'd be a quiet public hearing. We will now open the floor to public submissions. I'm going to ask if the applicant would like to make the first submission. Do we have the applicant here today to make a submission? If not, I will continue on.
Well, I'm I'm sure, your worship, there is a phone number on here, but I'm I'm not sure.
Donna, I believe the applicant is here, but he indicated that he might not choose to make a submission at the beginning.
Great. You could just raise your hand if you wish to speak. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so seeing none will move to the public submissions. So as we've just detailed, now would be the time to raise your hand if you'd like to make a submission to council on this public hearing. I let that one hang out for a while, so this will be my second time. Are there any submissions for bylaws number two zero six seven, two zero six eight, and two six two zero six nine for one one three zero Rocky Creek Road? Hearing none, I'll do the third and final call for more submissions on number bylaw numbers twenty sixty-seven, twenty sixty-eight, and twenty sixty-nine for one one three zero Rocky Creek Road. Hearing none, I will ask Ms. Smith if there are any written submissions to be read into the public record.
There are none, your worship.
Thank you. The public hearing for bylaw numbers twenty sixty-seven, twenty sixty-eight, and twenty sixty-nine is now closed. No further input or submissions can be provided to council. These bylaws are on tonight are on tonight's council meeting agenda for further consideration. Thank you all very much. Just give me a moment to get back on track. So that moves us, I believe, to item seven point one. So that this is the bylaws subject of the public hearing this evening. Sorry, I'm having technical issues again. Surprise, surprise. Okay, there we go. So this is item seven point one. The recommendation is that subject to any matters raised at the public hearing, council number one, proceed with third reading and dedication. Sorry, just seeing if I can. This one isn't a bandwidth issue, but the software is cutting off my ability to read the recommendations, so I'll just find them in the paper copy here. So hopefully the recommendations have not changed. The recommendation is that subject to any additional matters raised at the public hearing, council number one, proceed with third reading of road closure and dedication removal bylaw twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty-seven, number two, direct staff to refer bylaw two zero six seven to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure pursuant to section forty-one, three of the Community Charter. I think that's the two recommendations in that portion. Is that moved by Counselor Patterson? Seconded by Counselor Mackay. Any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, Counselor Mackay.
Just very quickly, I just want to speak in favor of this recommendation or because I kind of see this project as kind of the beginning of the waterfront starting to change. It's kind of that end of town. It's it's going to be creating a very important entrance. It's going to create a very important change to the structure of our town, and I I I just find it quite exciting that we are getting to see that piece of land developed and hopefully not too far behind it. Some other changes down at our waterfront. It's very exciting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Vertanen.
Sorry, just a question to the chair. Is this the right bylaw to talk about the project in general, or is the next one more more fitting for that?
I I put that through to staff. Usually we don't see a lot of discussion after a public hearing on the on the bylaws, but I would go through to staff. I think you can make your comments at any time, Counselor Vertanen.
Okay, thank you. I just I didn't really get a chance to ever say because I was trying to keep an open mind for the public meeting, but I'd like to echo what Counselor Mackay says. I just, this is such an awesome project, like thanks to the staff and the applicants. There's just so many positives here. I mean, there is besides what Counselor Mackay talked about, but I mean, we're bringing jobs to the community, having commercial space. Couple of national companies to anchor it in case there's any economic downturns. I mean, and then the icing on the cake is a roundabout. That was a costly capital project that is now going to be much more manageable for us. So yeah, I've I'm just talking to residents and everything else. I've actually I know I don't have a lot of experience on municipal council here, but I can recall a major product project with this much support, like. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
I was going to hold it to twenty sixty-nine, but since we're discussing the project, the general concept of what's happening in that end, I think, is very good. But my mind goes back to when we talked about the proposed cannabis store on First Avenue. We talked about the best use. And I don't think this piece of property that we're talking about, putting in a twenty thousand square foot Dollarama store in a drive-through restaurant is the best use of that property. I would love to see the property developed. I agree with all the benefits of a development on that property. But I don't think this is the project that we want for the great way to our town and to our town. I know that they have tried to sell this property and develop for fifteen years now, but he's come forward as yet. But the key word is as yet. I still would like to see something like a hotel or a significant family-style restaurant. So I'll be bowing against the motion on the grounds that it is not the best use of this property, but I do want to see development on that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And opposed? Counselor Johnson and Counselor Stephen oppose the motion carries. Moving on to item seven point two, the recommendation is that subject to any additional matters raised at the public hearing, council proceed with their reading of official community plan bylaw two thousand and three, number fourteen eighty-eight, amendment bylaw number sixty-five. Twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty-eight. Moved by Counselor Mackay, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Discussion. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? Counselor Stevens and Johnson oppose the motion carries. Moving on to item seven point three, recommendation is that subject to any additional matters raised at the public hearing, council proceed with third reading of Town of Lady Smith zoning bylaw twenty fourteen, number eighteen sixty, amendment bylaw number thirty-seven, twenty twenty one, number twenty sixty-nine, and number two, direct staff to refer bylaw number twenty sixty-nine to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure pursuant to section fifty-two of the Transportation Act. Moved by Counselor Vertanen, seconded by Counselor Mackay. Discussion. Counselor Patterson.
Okay, there we go. Um. I just find that the language confusing. On number one, schedule a zoning bylaw text, delete tourist service C D one from second, blah, blah, blah. B, replace subsection one P of section eleven fifteen Shopping Center Commercial C five with the following. Cannabis retail sales but in the parcels contained within the shaded areas identified on figures eleven point five and eleven point six. Okay, I I'm slow. And so I just I'm having trouble understanding that. And then secondly, I don't have a figure eleven point five.
Through the staff.
Um, through the chair, I figure eleven point five is already in the bylaw. So it it's already located in the main bylaw, and it it shows the Coronation Mall.
Okay, so just can I continue?
Oh, wow.
Cannabis retail sales but in the parcels contained within the shaded areas identified. Does that mean it's a go or it's not a go?
Through Ms. Hovey.
Yeah, it would be permitted on the subject property. The only C five property without cannabis retail permitted is the Dairy Queen across from the Coronation Mall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnson.
I just want to reinforce my comment that but best end use. I think we have an opportunity to have something that is a showstopper that can really reflect our community rather than just a mini strip mall. Thank you.
And I just note that the subject property was zoned for what you mentioned earlier in your comments, and there had been no interest in in building that on that site. It's a high traffic with much industrial traffic and a lot of noise from the mills. I'm not sure it would be suitable for a hotel development, and that was probably reflected in the fact that there was no interest in the present zoning on the property, which did allow for that hotel development. Seeing Counselor Johnson.
Well, this is to rebut. No, I agree that it is not necessarily the best spot for hotels now, but as I said, we got to look at what is the best for the future. Once we make it a strip mall, it's a strip mall. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Counselors Johnson and Stevens oppose the motion carries. Moving on to Riser with report, there are items from closed session in the recommendations here. So there's a yeah, I guess I could read them out. Direct the mayor and corporate officer to execute the license of occupation and use agreement with Lady Smith Community Garden Society for use of Lady Smith Community Garden located on a portion of High Street Park for a five-year period from June first, twenty twenty one until May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Number two, direct staff to give notice of the town's intent to grant a license of occupation and use agreement to the town to the Lady Smith Community Gardens in accordance with the Community Charter. And number three, rise and report on this item once public notice has been provided and the agreement is signed with both parties. C twenty twenty-one zero seven six, the council number one appoint Shirley Louis as the Staminus First Nation representative to the Public Art Task Group for a term ending September twenty twenty-two. Number two, rise and report on this item once the representative has been notified. Next is items from the closed meeting held June first, twenty twenty-one. And these are appointments. So the Community Planning Advisory Committee appointments for terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, resolution C E twenty twenty-one dash zero eight three. The names are Jason Robertson, Alice Farah Back. Back. Anyway, Brian Childs, Jennifer Sebald, Stephen Steve Frankel, Tamara Hutchison, and Jason Harrison. And next we have Parks and Rec, Parks Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee appointments for terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Those include Bruce Mason, Lucy Partington, the youth representative, Jeff Dean, and Linda Baker. And the next one is that council direct staff to readvertise for applications to the Parks Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee in order to fill one remaining vacant position. Moving on to minutes, next one is minutes of the public hearing and regular meeting of council held June first, twenty twenty-one. If there are no errors or omissions, a motion to adopt those minutes. Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Stevens. All those in favor? And opposed? None opposed to motion carries.
Your worship.
Ms. Smith.
Excuse me. We do have one item from this evening's closed meeting. Would you like me to read that recommendation out?
Please go ahead.
Okay. So council moved to rise and report on an item entitled twelve sixty Churchill Place. And the resolution is that council direct staff to prepare and bring forward for council consideration in an open meeting a rezoning proposal, road reserve covenant, housing agreement, and park dedication plan for twelve sixty Churchill Place to A dedicate as park the eastern low-lying portion of the property. B establish a future road allowance connecting Churchill Place and McKinley Road. C secure a future affordable housing unit to be sold in perpetuity at less than market rates to qualifying purchasers. D rezone the western portion of the property to R one C. E rezone the eastern plateau of the property to R three. And F add the property to the multi-use residential D P A development permit area and to rise and report on that recommendation immediately.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next item on our agenda, I believe, then is our request for delegation. And there's no recommendation here. So Ms. Smith or someone from staff, if you could please inform us on the best path forward.
The council has determined by approving the agenda to include this late item. Delegation requests regarding development variance permits or development permits that are on an agenda are entitled to to speak or applied to be a delegation anyways at a council meeting. And that's as per council's procedure bylaw.
Thank you.
And so I can bring Mr. Finnegan in.
Okay, so typically we do that during the consideration of the application, but in this case, we've actually adopted it in a place before the development application. So I guess it would be appropriate to bring him in now and give him the opportunity to speak.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Finnegan, you should be able to unmute and turn on your video.
Sorry, video share screen. Is that working for everyone? Hello?
Uh, yeah.
Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm the house designer for the owner, Peter Nijenga, who lives, who's purchased three fifty Shemenas Road. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of the points that are in the staff recommendations from engineering and planner. And basically, in the port regarding, the first report is from your engineering department regarding accessing the safety concerns. So basically, I assume you're all familiar with three fifty Shemenas Road. It's one of the main roads along the Lady Smith area. There's a large retaining wall that can be seen. Let me see here if I can scroll down to the geotech report. To give you some background. If you can see it there, there's a large lock block wall. It's about thirteen feet high. And actually, the picture that you're looking at is the area that we wish to amend to create an access, which is the main concern of staff. So in the engineering report, if I go back to where that was. There you go. Engineering basically has stated that they're okay with the access as long as we remove the existing wall, which I just showed you, and slope back the grades. And basically, we were okay with that. I believe the owner has some issues with staff regarding costs, which I won't address. I'll just briefly click to a model of the the site here. Just, this is the computer model of the drawings. So this is the building that's proposed. This is the existing. I don't know if you can see my pointer. This is the existing retaining wall. This red piece of wall is the wall we were proposing to take away. And we were agreeing with engineering, this would be our access. Because basically, this thirteen-foot-high retaining wall goes the entire length of the the site, and it's, there is no access. So basically, the site has become sort of an island. So this is one of the locations that we had proposed. I'll let the owner and staff discuss the costs of it, but that was what we had intended. There is some discussion about how you grade back this thirteen-foot-high wall of dirt, and there's encroachment agreements and such that need to be to be dealt with. So I just wanted to clarify that point. And the second point is from the same thing regarding the retaining wall encroachment. I'm not sure who makes these notes. I just wanted to clarify that the note says a small portion of the towns are obtaining more approaches onto the subject property near its south end. I mean, in general, it is a small amount. Excuse me. If you look at the entire, the wall starts here. This is the area we want to remove, and the wall goes all the way along the entire length of the property. But when you say a small amount, it's relative to how long it is. The the amount that encroaches in orange is a hundred and seventy-three feet long, thirteen feet high, and almost six feet wide. So I just wanted to clarify what a small amount meant. And I just wanted to clarify that the the wall basically completely prevents any access to the side at any location. And the location that we proposed was this far end where the wall was ending. So I don't have any comments or anything about encroachment and those arrangements, but I just wanted to clarify to the staff or to the to the council what it is that they're voting on and and hopefully, if if it is reviewed, you guys can come up with a way for us to access it that works for engineering and and the council. And I don't know how to stop talking. How do I stop? Stop, share?
Apologies. Thank you for that. Is there any questions of the applicant? Okay, well, Mr. Finnegan, thank you very much for for that clarification and for sharing those observations with us. I appreciate that very much, and I do believe without any council questions, that does conclude our delegation portion. So thank you for that. And when we get to item eleven point three, we'll take your comments and your presentation into consideration. All right, moving on, development applications, item eleven point one is a development variance application for six one four Brown Drive. The recommendation from staff is that council issue development variance permit three zero nine zero dash two one dash zero five. To vary the front parcel line setback from six meters to three point three meters for an unenclosed balcony attached to an existing dwelling at lot forty five district lot. Ninety six Oyster District Plan. Two eight five eight five for six one four Brown Drive and number two. Authorize the mayor and corporate officer to sign the development variance permit. Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Stevens, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None opposed motion carries. Moving on to item eleven point two, development variance permit application. Development variance permit and development permit applications for six dash two four five Oyster Cove Road. Recommendations is that council issue development variance permit three zero nine zero dash two one dash zero six to allow. To two story accessory buildings in her front yard. And to increase the permitted height, height of an accessory of the accessory buildings from three point five meters to four. Five point one meters and four point one meters respectively as strata lot six district lot fifty six. Oyster District Strata Plan two thousand nine, together with an interest in the common property in proportion to unit entitlement. Of the strata lot as shown on form one, six dash two four five Oyster Cove Road. And number two issue development per- permit three zero six zero dash two one dash zero one to allow construction of a dwelling. To accessory buildings and retaining walls at six dash two four five Oyster Cove Road. And number three authorize the mayor and corporate officer to sign development variance, variance permit three zero nine zero dash two one dash zero six. Moved by councillor Mackay. Seconded by councillor Vertanen, discussion. Councillor Johnson.
This b- area property is under a strata, correct?
Yes, it is.
Is there any comments from the strata council?
I put that through to staff. Ms. Thompson?
Through the chair. Um, no, we didn't receive any. Public submissions from anyone, including the strata council.
They were well aware of what's proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those who are not familiar, uh, most of the, the, I think every single house that gets built in this development comes for some variance or another. Mostly due to setbacks, um, and the, uh. The setback from the, uh, garages and the buildings and so on. Uh, so any further discussion? Oh, Ms. Smith.
Uh, your worship, it looks like there is a typo in recommendation number one. Uh, it, I believe it should be, it should read. Uh, the height of the accessory buildings from to vary it from three point five meters to five point two meters. Instead of five point one meters.
Thank you. To the mover and second, are you amenable to, uh, taking that amendment to the motion? Thank you. Ms. Smith, is that appropriate?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Well, now my plant, my thoughts have changed. It's ten centimeters. I'm kidding. I guess it's not time for levity. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None opposed motion carries. Uh, the next item is eleven point three in this development variance permit application for three five zero Schumanus Road. The staff recommendation is that council deny development variance permit application three zero nine zero dash two zero dash zero six for three five zero Schumanus Road. Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Vertanen, discussion. I have a question through to staff, not seeing any hands. Uh, the applicant is, uh, is there any, uh, embargo on follow on applications? Uh, if this application is, doesn't denied, is the applicant free to. Uh, mend their application and make a subsequent development variance permit application, or is there a, a time? Which, which, uh, they have to wait before resubmitting.
Through the chair, they can submit. Another DVP, um, I don't have the procedures by law in front of me right now. I'm not sure if there's a time. Limitation or restriction, rather. I don't think that there is.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear. I don't believe there are. I've just seen another local government. Sometimes there's the six month waiting period, but I'll go through to Mr. Bella Baba.
Uh, through the chair, um, there is a twelve month reapplication, um. Uh, prohibition, however. Um, is the prohibition does not apply if the application is modified. So. If the applicant were to submit the exact same application, then they could not do so for twelve months. However, if they were to make modifications, they could, uh, apply immediately.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. And opposed. Councillor Johnson opposed the motion carries. Moving on to committee minutes, item thirteen point one is that council received for information. The minutes of the March thirtieth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Arts and Heritage Hub Steering Committee. Move, but, oh, sorry. Ms. Smith.
Uh, your worship, we just missed, uh, item. Former item eleven point one, twelve point one now.
The apology. So roll back a little bit. The recommendation on this is twelve point one is zoning amendment to permit existing single unit dwellings in the C two, C four and R three zones. So this is essentially. Um, legalizing, uh, existing structures within those zones. Is that correct, Mr. Bella Baba? I know it will do. Thank you. Or, or no, but that's in the affirmative. Uh, the recommendation is that the council give first and second readings to town of Las Vegas zoning by law twenty fourteen, number eighteen sixty amendment by law number forty. Twenty twenty one, number twenty seventy eight. Number two, direct staff to proceed with scheduling and notification of a public hearing for by law number twenty seventy eight pursuant to the Local Government Act. Number three, direct staff to refer by law number twenty seventy eight to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure following third reading of the by law pursuant to the Transportation Act. Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Vertanen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And opposed. None opposed motion carries. Uh, now we're moving on to committee minutes. This is item thirteen point one, Arts and Heritage Hub Steering Committee from March thirtieth, twenty twenty one. And the recommendation is the council received the, for information, the minutes of the March thirtieth, twenty twenty one Arts and Heritage Hub Steering Committee. Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Stevens, any discussion? Councillor Stevens.
Oh, it's, it's just a po- a small point about, uh, Mike George, our communication and engagement specialist. Um.
Mike Gregory.
It's Mike George in the, in the, in the minutes. Other than that, all good. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson.
I don't see, uh, when they're going to have the next meeting. Do you know when the next meeting will be or it will be at the call of the chair?
Uh, through the staff.
Um, through the chair, we are working on that. We had some tentative dates. Um, unfortunately, there were some, uh, members that couldn't make that. So we're in the process of rescheduling. So. Hopefully we'll be able to get something together, um, at the sort of mid-July.
Thank you. Follow up.
Will this likely be a Zoom meeting or do you think it'll be an in-person meeting?
Ms. McCarrick.
Uh, July first, um, if new, uh, measures come into effect through the, uh, provincial health officer. Um, we'll look at it at that time. And if the numbers bear, we could try and, uh, meet in person. Uh, if they don't, then we will be doing it via Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a motion to receive for information. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None opposed motion carries. Uh, moving on to Parks Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee minutes from May nineteenth, and the recommendation is the council received the minutes for information. Moved by councillor Stevens, seconded by councillor Patterson. Any discussion seeing not, oh, councillor Vertanen. This is the only council I've seen that has discussion on receipt of minutes for information.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a real quick comment on, on page one thirty seven of the agenda. I'm really encouraged to see the possibility of a park implementation plan is a future opportunity for Brown Drive Park. I've been there quite a bit lately with my daughter Lily and I've always felt it's really underutilized. But with the new trails and the storybook block, it's, it's getting a feeling that it's starting to come into its own a little bit. So I really hope that, uh, Parks and Rec will, uh, follow through with that because there's tons of potential there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Patterson.
What did he just say?
He wants to make the part cooler duck.
Okay, that's, that's groovy. I like.
Encouraging them to follow through with some parks use planning for that site. And that field, I tell you, Spiny's Field there's got a lot of potential opportunities. But for future discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None opposed motion carries. Moving on to official community plan steering committee minutes from May twentieth, twenty one. The recommendation is that council received for information, the minutes of the May twentieth, twenty one, meeting of the OCP Steering Committee. Moved by councillor Stevens, seconded by councillor Johnson, discussion. Councillor Patterson. Did you want to speak to this councillor Patterson? You're muted. Did you want to speak to this? You had your hand up, so I thought you wanted to speak to it. You're still muted. Is that me? Oh, you were unmuted for a sec, but now you're muted again. Go ahead.
I don't have a. I'm glad that they're removing all this crap. Uh, no, I think I was frozen from before.
All right, thank you. Okay, no further discussion. So I'll call the question. All those in favor. We're bouncing right along. None opposed motion carries. Moving on to community planning advisory committee meetings for June second, twenty twenty one. Recommendations is the council received for information, the minutes of the June second, twenty twenty one. Meeting of the Community Planning Advisory Committee moved by councillor Mackay, seconded by councillor Stevens, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None opposed motion carries. Moving on to reports, item fourteen point one is the town of Las Vegas twenty twenties. Statement of financial information. And the recommendation is the council approved the town of Las Vegas statement of financial information for the fiscal year ended December thirty first, twenty twenty. Moved by councillor Patterson, seconded by councillor Jacobson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None opposed motion carries. Moving on to item fourteen point two subdivision land agreement for Drakensberg Development Corporation, Theadus Drive subdivision. Recommendation is the council authorized the mayor and corporate officer to sign the land transfer agreement between the town and Drakensberg Development Corporation for the transfer of lands. Associated with the eleven lot subdivision on Theadus Drive. Moved by councillor Vertanen, seconded by councillor Patterson, any discussion? Councillor Patterson and then Johnson.
I'm trying, there we go. Um, okay, I got to try and find, I lost my post-it note. So if this cannot become dedicated parkland. Because Fortis and, and Hydro, um. Don't want their right of way. To be parked. What will this be called and what can we do with it?
Through the staff, Mr. Goodall.
So. Um, right now it's just a piece, simple piece of property. Um, it would probably be beneficial in the future. You know, you could probably zone it, um, park. You just can't dedicate it park. The, um, Fortis and, and, uh, the utilities don't like to have their right of ways on park. They find it restrictive. Um, but you, so you won't be able to dedicate it as long as those right of ways are on there that won't be dedicated. And right now it'll exist as be simple land. And just to be clear, most of this land are almost, basically all of this land is ripe carrying. So it's not really. Appropriate for any kind of development anyway.
Councillor Patterson, you got a follow up?
No, I just, I. I'm trying to, uh, to figure it out here in my head. Um. So we can zone it as park and, and. So there is the put it potential not, so we can zone it as park. And if we want to put trails or playground equipment, uh, we can still do that. Uh, even though Hydro and Fortis. Don't want to dedicate it.
Mr. Goodall.
Yes, like you, we have lots of trail networks and, and that cross and run along, um, existing right of ways now. So I don't see that there'll be a restriction there of putting trails and, and that was the purpose of this, um, property in the first place. Um, the parks director of the time had indicated that he would like to see a trail through this, uh, property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson and then Mackay.
Quick question, um. I am not familiar exactly what's happening in Theadus Drive right now subdivision. I understand that we are putting a road in to connect with Holland Creek Developments. Is this going to be directly related to that?
Through to Mr. Goodall.
So it's directly related in the sense that Theadus Drive will, um. Eventually connect up into Holland Creek. But this, these eleven lots aren't associated with, with that actual connection. But when the next phase. Of, um. The Theadus Drive, the last phase is complete, then, then that road will be going as far as it goes. And then there'll be an opportunity to connect that up into Holland Creek. But it does go through, there is a small piece of ground land that that, that connection has to go through.
Thank you.
So, uh, what I'm trying to get at is these ten or eleven lots. Eventually will they be adding traffic to the existing Roly Rose? Because that's a, I have quite a congested road even now in the planned development. I'm just running the, the effects a bit.
Not sure how it's relevant to the discussion and the motion on the floor, but Mr. Goodall, if you will.
So through the chair, the. I mean, potentially that is true. Um, people could choose to, if they were exiting their property, they could choose, once the connection is made to go through. Um, the Holland Creek properties come out at, um, out at, uh. Roly Rose and then a Dogwood, but they just as likely would go Theadus and come out on Davis.
Okay.
And vice versa.
Yeah.
And the, the last question was just more direct. Uh, how many acres or square meters is this property that we're talking about that's being dedicated?
I'm, I'm not, I, sorry, I do not have that exact number. I don't know if, uh, the senior engineer is there knows the number.
Oh, I'm trying to remember offhand as well. I, I think it's around two thousand square meters.
About the size of a lot.
A very, very big lot.
Huge, much larger, yeah.
And would it be longitudinal or it'd be square?
Uh, you can see the diagram in the staff report, councillor Johnson.
Difficult, sometimes these drawings. So small.
I don't know if staff can, it's, it's an irregular shaped lot, Mr. Mr. Beaumai, I think that's.
It's mostly rectangular.
It's got a little bit of a.
Yeah, bit of an awkward shape to it, but mostly rectangular.
Is there just trying to, as regards to a playground park, what kind of facility it would be? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councillor Mackay?
Just, it's kind of along the same lines as, uh, councillor Johnson. Just clarification for myself, I'm looking at page one ninety three, looking at the map. And I'm just verifying that the whole area we're talking about is that which is marked in red. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so it's, it's forty three thousand eight hundred and nine square feet. So it's huge. So it'd be a great area for, uh, trails.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And opposed. None opposed motion carry. Uh, moving on to item fourteen point three, Ford Road Water Main Replacement. The recommendation is that we direct staff, that council direct staff to facilitate the replacement of forty eight meters of water main on Ford Road for an estimated cost of fifty eight thousand with funds to come from the water utility reserve. And amend the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five financial plan accordingly. Number two, authorize the developers contractor graph concrete and iron ink. To complete the works while they construct the developers portion of the forward road water main as part of the development of the former Dolby site. Moved by councillor Stevens, seconded by councillor Patterson, discussion. Councillor Mackay.
Thank you. Uh, I just think this is, it's a, a great idea. It, it was one of the concerns for the, uh, people that live on Forward Road was that the, uh. The impact on their water.
The impact on their water system that they already felt was fragile. So I think it's uh timely and it's a great opportunity. I completely support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Stevens.
Uh, thank you. I'd echo councillor Mackay's uh comments and say I uh, I think this is brilliant in that it's speed and value all in one. Um, we're we're getting the work done and it's it's going to be done cost effectively. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed motion carries moving on to item fourteen point four retaining wall Lady Smith Community Marina Parking Lot. Recommendation is the council direct staff to proceed with remediation of the Laysmith Community Marina retaining wall as outlined in option A of the staff report dated June fifteenth twenty twenty one. Councillor Vertanen. Okay, thank you. And a seconder. Seconded by councillor Stevens. Discussion. Councillor Stevens.
I was, I was simply seconding. Um, I've, I agree, I agree with the uh, the the report, all, everything is presented in the report. I think this is the uh, the most cost effective option. Um, there's a, there's a near comparable um. Safety margin by my reading uh compared to more expensive routes and for a a road that's eventually going to be. Um, maybe downgroaded to a trail as the water waterfront plan uh is actualized. I think it's the, it's the best approach. I realize that it makes parking down below tight. But as I recall from January, the the um. The orders of magnitude and between the the sort of reshape anchor and pilings options of it sort of doubled and then tripled in terms of cost. And I can't imagine the numbers might have changed, but I bet the proportions have stayed essentially the same. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, through to councillor Vertanen and then councillor Mackay or Johnson and Mackay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to put staff on the spot here, but we did receive an afternoon email. Saying that uh, Mr. Goodall had a conversation with one of the members of L M S about this. I'm just wondering, we heard outside of. The argument or or whatever conversation, um, is there any comment on that from staff?
I put that through to staff.
So uh, through the chair, yes, um, we did have. An individual that I believe is actually a member of the board and a former engineer um. Call us uh yesterday and um, and we went down and attended the site and he had some ideas of of how he thought um. It could be done um differently than we're we're proposing. Um, and he thought that it would be a most more cost effective option. So staff. Have taken that idea. I mean, we did look at that, a similar idea to what this individual is proposing. They were proposing not removing the. The um existing building and putting a retaining wall behind it by um putting. Um, H piles in the ground um and putting a oh sort of a wall behind the building. Uh, we have had some preliminary discussions uh this afternoon with our engineer and um. Although that's possible, they believe that it's going to be result in a similar cost to the um. To other more expensive option that's um included in the um, in the report. We will kind of look into that a in a little bit more detail with the um consultant, but um just on a. You know, just looking at it cursory at this point, they don't feel that um it will be less expensive. And they still feel that it will likely result in having to remove the building to put that structure in. So in in essence, it won't save you anything.
Thank you. Councillor uh Johnson and Mackay then Patterson.
Thank you. I'm trying to find in here if I remember, what is the utility building used for? Is it electrical or just storage, whatever? What are the problems with relocating it?
So um. Through through the chair, sorry. Um, so the the building right now um is houses the electrical. So the electrical comes down the hill onto a pole and then into the building. But it also has the um, the water main goes into that building and there's a meter and backflow preventer that are located there. And then I believe on the other side of the building, I'm not, I'm I'm only sort of familiar with our utility. I think there's a a garage or something that they they um. The Marina park a um, like a golf cart and some equipment. So.
So the relocation of the water meter and the hydro meter would be borne by who?
Through the chair, at the present time, it's it's the municipality. So we would, we would be on the, from what I can see, we're on the hook for. Everything involved in this um, in this repair.
So there's twenty five thousand dollars that's quoted in the recommendation. Is that just a wall or everything included?
Mr. Goodall.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused.
Not sure where that number came from councillor.
Well, on page two twelve under the, oh, previous council decision was approximately twenty five thousand dollars.
Go ahead, Mr. Cut Hall.
We did hear that. That's an old resolution. That's.
Yeah.
Your resolution to do the actual second phase of the geotechnical work. So the 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 work is going to be expensive.
What are we talking, may ask?
We we don't. We have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, which we have spent some of, and it's going to be substantially more than that.
And how is that going to be paid for?
That is. Johnson, I'm just going to remind you that there's procedure in our meetings and you constantly ignore them. So if you'd like to have a follow up, please ask and I'll grant you the opportunity. But this is like your fourth rapid fire question. So I'll give Mr. Goodall the opportunity to respond. But in the future, if you could please follow proper procedure during our council meetings, it would be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Goodall.
Uh, through the chair, at the, at the present time, we haven't determined where the money uh would come from. We'll have to work with finance. It is possible that we might have to come back to council and um look at deferring um, deferring a a. Project in the capital plan um. For this, but we will, as soon as we have a better um understanding of the cost, we will bring that back to council with those um, with those options.
Thank you. And I'll go through to councillor Mackay and then councillor Patterson.
Thank you. Uh, recognizing that no matter how we split it, this is a temporary. A fix on a situation that would be potentially if the waterfront plan. Takes root, uh, it would be getting changed anyway. Is that accurate to say?
Through the cherry, yes, I, the the road is is not going in with the area waterfront area plan. The road isn't actually a road anymore. It's a trail. So it does, it still exists, but it would be probably narrower than it is today.
So follow up?
Yep.
Um, so so the the way that we're looking at doing it, uh, the the choice that you're you're recommending for us. Is it sufficient then to be able to be to some degree still useful to us down the road? When this becomes more of a trail and that everything transitions over. So we're not going to end up having to face. A a whole other uh upgrade to it.
Mr. Goodall.
It, I'm I'm hoping there's some, some degree of this will be worthwhile and in a aside from the fact that it has to happen. Obviously now too, so.
Mr. Goodall.
Well, through the chair, um, yes, the option that we're looking at um is considered a long term option. Um, particularly if it was going to be used for a trail as it denotes in the um geotechnical report. In the event of a seismic um, um event that occurs, there could be some settlement on it. But um, the settlement we feel is um, can be managed um after it be filled in or that sort of thing. So yes, it's a, it's a long term solution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm a little apprehensive about moving forward on this as the recommendation. Because if we go to page two fifteen of the agenda, which all of us have. It says staff have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for this project, although cost estimates are not yet available. And Mr. Goodall went on to say that it could uh bump or affect other capital projects. So I would like to get more information on the costs and projects that it could impact um. Before I make a decision on this, um, the recommendation just. To me says proceed with remediation. But the implications um. Aren't there? So I I can't.
Councillor Patterson, just to clarify, clarify, a requirement of the work would be that staff would come to us for a budget amendment.
Well, if that's um, uh, on page two fifteen, staff will update council once cost estimates are available and request the required funding. But the recommendation states that uh proceed with remediation of the Lady Smith Community Marina.
I'll put that through to staff. I don't know, either either Ms. McCarrick or or Ms. Anderson can comment on the. The requirements for budget amendments to come before council. So once the budget cost estimates, my understanding would be. That those would come back to council for authorization.
Okay, if that, if that's the case, and yeah, yeah, and I can go with.
Finish speaking, um, but Ms. McCarrick or Ms. Anderson, could you clarify that for us?
That's correct. Once we have um, the consultants take a look and get us some costing on. Uh, option A and also we will investigate option B uh in case and compare the costs. Uh, if we don't have to move that water line, um, although then that may take up some of more of the um. Uh, the parking area. So those um options and the costing on all of the auctions will be brought back to council. Uh, it's not something though that we should be delaying. It has that slope has moved um incredibly quickly. Um, from even when I first saw it, when I first came, um, and if Mr. Goodall wants to add to that, um, he can.
Goodall.
Oh, yeah, through the chair. That's that's um, that's correct. The the only thing that we won't be doing is we won't be pursuing the. Like the first two options are basically the same. Um, it's just a different um slope on the wall. But the other option at the end, the more expensive one, we won't pursue, be pursuing a cost estimate for that uh, that option. Cause it's, it's going to be substantially higher.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm done through my list. Any further discussion? Councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson, you're still muted.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to refresh my mind regards to waterfront plant. I remember it being that we were going to expand that apron out and put a series of shops along there. And. As the question is, how does that whole bank fit in with? The proposal for the waterfront plan having a series of commercial buildings along that apron along the waterfront.
I'd put that through to Mr. Goodall and Mr. Boma, but my understanding would be stabilizing that would make that possibility or a possibility rather than precluding it with.
No, no, I'm not saying. Precluding. What I'm saying is, do we have to do a lot more? Will it expand? That's my question.
Mr. Goodall, I think you answered the question to the previous questioner about this being a long term solution to stabilize the bank, but I'll put it through to Mr. Goodall.
So through the chair, yes, um, the portion that we're uh stabilizing is the portion that contains the um timber retaining wall. Um, we aren't looking at the stability of the rest of the slope at this point. We're just dealing with the slope that's failing. And yes, this will help the water area of the waterfront area plan because the slope will be stabilized. Um, but for what you're talking about, the buildings and things, there's a lot of infill that is going to have to occur at the bottom for that to happen.
That engineering would address the stability of that infill to make that possible.
Correct.
Thank you. Follow up?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion's on the floor, Ms. Smith. Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? None opposed motion carries. Moving on to our bylaw status sheet, that's there for information. So for members of the public and for council, there's the bylaw status sheet. Moving on to correspondence, this is a referral from the Ministry of Forest Lands and Natural Resource Operations and Rural Development. Dated. Wow, it's a long one. June third twenty twenty one. And the recommendation is the council recommend that the for ministry of forest lands, natural resource operations and rural development approve crown land tenure. Application one zero zero three zero five seven three six for private mortgage at three oh three Shemena's Road, provided that adequate. Measures are put in place to protect fisheries and fisheries and aquaculture in the area. Moved by councillor Vertanen. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Jacobson. Discussion. Councillor Patterson and then Stevens.
Thank you, worship. Uh, I know we received uh a copy of one letter from uh local um. Shellfish farmers in the area, but uh have we heard anything from the others?
I'd put that through to staff. I believe there's an engagement process that takes place. That's not part of our jurisdiction, but I would put that through to staff.
Uh, through the chair, we have only received the one letter, uh, whether or not others have written letters to the province. Uh, we don't know.
Thank you. I will note that the recommendation does say provided that adequate measures are put in place to protect fisheries and aquaculture in the area. Councillor Stevens.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, that, for me, that second part of the uh, of the resolution is the operative part and the important part. And and with that included, I'm I'm comfortable with it, uh, keeping in mind the letter we've received and I'm assuming it's maybe sentiments and are similar to others uh who are in those industries. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Councillor Patterson opposed. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to Ms. Smith, I don't see we have any unfinished business and that believe that takes us to question period.
Uh, we just have one item of new business. The incentive, yeah.
Okay, I'm clicking, clicking away. Uh, the recommendation item seven point seventeen point one incentive to property owners for graffiti. Uh. Graffiti removal. Can't use my soul's small screen as an excuse anymore. I have a thirty two inch screen and it still cuts it off. Um, the recommendation is that council allocate up to twenty five hundred dollars from the grant and aid budget to provide an incentive to property owners to remove graffiti in a timely manner by offering them one time fifty dollar rebate to property owners from June sixteenth to July fifteenth twenty twenty one. And that staff be directed to facilitate the rebate program. Moved by councillor Patterson. Seconded by councillor Mackay. Discussion. I knew we'd have a lot of questions on it because I got a long list. Uh, I'm sorry, I saw four hands go up and I didn't get a chance to put you in order. So councillor Mackay's first and then councillor Patterson and then councillor Stevens and Johnson.
Thank you. Um, so a great idea. Um, a couple of questions come to mind though. Uh, for instance, can can a uh property owner apply more than once for the rebate? Is it possible for them to uh? Come back and have additional uh applications for other graffiti that might come about?
Through staff.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, the um. It's so it may get over subscribed. Uh, staff would look at that as we see what the subscription is only up to twenty five hundred dollars. Uh, the total amount. So and then how long the program is. So um, we would want to uh put them probably on a list for the second application. And make sure that it was, everybody had a chance. And if there were monies remaining and it was within the time limit uh of July fifteenth, then we could um allow that.
Follow up just quickly. Uh, i- is there a reason? Sorry, is it okay? Is there a reason why uh it's only one month? Is, I'm just curious as to why it's not a couple of months?
Through staff.
Thought process on that was that um, this came about in a discussion actually that we staff had had with the the mayor. That we had observed quite a bit of graffiti lately on the downtown core area. So the turnaround was to get action and have that cleaned up as quickly as possible.
Okay, so can I just follow up with a comment just quickly? Uh, I I and I get that. I completely understand. I figured that was the point. I'm just wondering if maybe it will take a little bit longer for the word to get out and for the uptake to happen. So um, just, just a word of caution around. So just just a word of caution around being sensitive to it. Sometimes it takes two, three weeks for something to even catch on word of mouth. And regardless of how much effort we make to communicate things, sometimes it has to go through the ground. So just a comment.
Thank you. I would agree with that because, you know, by the time even if it's a contractor required and this is a rebate program to compensate people for costs. There's a good likelihood that even if they're aware of it come tomorrow, that they can't complete the work and submit the rebate within the timeframe that's allotted. So I have that in my options to discuss as well. Counselor Patterson, Stevens and then Johnson, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Yes, I was concerned about the timeframe that's on it. My my biggest concern is why we're having to expend taxpayers' dollars on on vandalism. And and that's what it is. It is it is vandalism. And I was hoping to make an amendment that we offer a reward of five hundred dollars. Leading to the apprehension of the little pukes that are doing this. Because it it has been there's been a bit of an uptake on it in the last little while, unfortunately. So I'm not too sure about the proper legalese wording to add an amendment to this or make it a second motion.
I would think it might be a follow on motion that I would entertain after this discussion's complete. I don't think that that's in the same spirit and intent of the motion that's on the floor. So I'll be back. I'll come back to you for a motion after this discussion and vote concludes. Counselor Stevens.
So I I won't ask a question. I'll just make the assumption this is this is private property owners or business owners. Included, I'm I'm assuming all by property owners generic term. I'm just I I'm just want it's just seems like an odd fit to be coming from grant and aid. Given the other things that are funded by by the grant and aid and those excess funds, they tend to be community events or community services. Is I'm not to be daft, but if I am daft, could 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 I have sort of an explanation why grant and aid is that the most likely place and I just don't see it?
Through to staff.
You want to take that?
I can take that one. Sure. It was it was just a non budgeted item. And in the grant and aid budget, if you recall, there is a one line of council discretion. And that this is one of those programs that could be completely in councils per view if they choose to put it in there or not.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Stevens touched to my point and that is property owners. So we're covering the whole town because basically the problem is the downtown core and likely the people who are being tagged are usually commercial businesses, the downtown core. Would it not make more sense to have it as a building owner or a business?
I put that through to staff.
Thank you, your worship. Through the chair, Counselor Johnson, staff did consider that. We didn't want to it to be that we were aiding certain businesses over other businesses. And also because some of our commercial, we have residential and commercial in one building. And there are buildings that are residentially zoned that have been tagged also.
Thank you. So I'll see seeing that we've gone through our list. My concern is is on the time limit. In in terms of the necessity to do this, it's not uncommon in other municipalities. In fact, I pulled this idea from other municipalities who've seen a little bit of a resurgence in in graffiti during COVID idle hands, if you will. So, you know, hopefully this isn't an endemic situation that we end up living with, but more of a pandemic effect that will pass as people get more and better things to do with their time. And just following on what I'd seen from other municipalities, I had suggested a higher amount. But I still do remain concerned about the the time limit in the fact that it's a very busy time. Some of our property owners may not be physically capable of doing the remediation, whether it be cleaning or or painting over. And a contractor may not be able to deliver service and provide a bill and get rebates in time. So I would hope that maybe before I call the question on this, a counselor might extend that time period to August fifteenth. It still gives a time limit, so provide some impetus to, you know, act quickly because of the number one thing you'll hear about remediating graffiti is the quicker you act, the more it discourages further activity. But as graffiti remains, it encourages like activity from others. So we do hope that I I would hope that council would support this and I would I I loathe to introduce my own amendment, but if counselors think that an extra month of time to complete the work and and put the rebate. I would be happy to welcome an amendment to change July fifteenth to August fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Counselor Patterson.
I was gonna actually move till the end of September as an amendment.
That's your prerogative. So if the if Counselor Patterson is is making a motion to amend the date to September thirtieth, then would it be? Is that what you're saying or or mid September?
Septem- the end of September, whether it's thirtieth or thirty first.
Third thirtieth. We could say the thirty first, but then it'll never end because that day will never come.
Okay, well, I forget that April, May, June, whatever this thing.
The first one in that song is thirty days has September. And then April, June and November.
Okay, I got part of it.
All right. So the motion on the the amendment on the floor, if there's a second or is to extend the time period to September thirtieth. Is that a second on the amendment, Counselor Johnson? Thank you. So we do have the amendment on the floors or discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, I'll call the question. This is on the amendment for the date to September thirtieth. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed motion carries now on the motion as amended. Are there any further discussions? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the motion as amended. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed motion carries. I'll go back to you as I promised, Counselor Patterson, for your reward motion.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to see the town take a step in trying to 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 stop this and and that being a reward for the apprehension of the people responsible for it. Will it work? I hope so, but I don't know. I don't know how much of a reward would be incentive enough, but I would like to see us offer, say, a thousand dollars. And I'll just put that out there for for discussion.
Is that a second or Counselor Vertanam? No. Okay, so before Counselor Patterson's made a motion, I want to see if we have a second or for the motion before we entertain discussion. Is that a second, Counselor Johnson? All right. It's on the floor. Reward of a thousand dollars. We're gonna have to get advice on where we would get these dollars from, but I'll go to my speakers list. I have Counselor Vertanen and then Mackay.
Sorry, I I appreciate the spirit of Counselor Patterson's. I would like to refer this to committee of the whole, if anything, to maybe I'll get a staff report on what other municipalities do, everything else. I do appreciate the spirit for when he brings it in, but I won't support the motion though.
Okay, so are you making a referral motion to committee of the whole to bail us out of this little mess? Do we have a second or for the referral motion? I like your style seconded by Counselor Jacobson. So now this is on a motion to refer, not on the substantive nature of the motion. Is there any discussion on the referral? We'll place it on our next count committee of the whole agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed motion carries. Thank you all for helping me with Counselor Patterson's motion. Moving on to question period. Ms. Smith.
There are no letters received this evening and I'll just check our gallery and I don't see any hands raised in our gallery.
I'll let it linger for just a moment to see if anybody has any questions. Can always email us at any time, towncouncil@ladiesmith.ca or info@ladiesmith.ca if it may involve a staff response. And if you send it to town council and it requires a staff response, I'll forward it to them and let you know that that's what we've done. Seeing no further questions, no question period attendees, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Stevens, seconded by Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you all and have a good evening.
Counselor Patterson, I just wanted to know if you're gonna include the words little puke.
Sure. I used that once before.